Casey, just checking that you can hear us.
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, thanks, Casey. Turn the mic on. Good morning and welcome to Municipal Council of the District of Lunenburg. This morning, we will host a public hearing on the amendments to the Municipal Planning Strategy and Land Use Bylaw, which includes new sections containing the regulations related to cluster development. So, the public hearing is a formal process and there are a number of steps that we will go through, which will include introduction of all the council members, and presentations from the public, an outline from staff, and an opportunity for council members to ask questions. And then we'll close the hearing and then go into our regular council meeting, and we have proposed that we will move cluster development discussion to early in the agenda, so that those who may be in the gallery and want to hear the discussion are not having to sit through our entire meeting. So, at this point, I will, at 8:31, call the meeting to order, and I think that I have outlined to you exactly what we are going to do, but I will call on the council members to introduce themselves, so their presence is recorded in the public record. So, if we could start with Counselor Reinhardt.
Hi, I'm Morgan Reinhardt, Counselor for District One.
Good morning. District Number Two, Counselor Martin Bell, that's the west side of the La Haye River.
District Three, Wendy Oikle, however, I am declaring a conflict of interest and will be removing myself from the table.
Good morning, Pam Hoobley, District Four.
Good morning, Kathy Moore, District Five, New Germany and surrounding communities, and I only wish I had cluster development.
Good morning, Allison Smith, District Six.
Good morning, Edgar Burns, District Seven, West Northfield, Cookeville, Pine Grove, Maitland.
Good morning, Casey DeLong, District Eight, that's all the communities surrounding Mahone Bay, and I'm sorry, I can't be with you in person today.
Good morning, Ben Brooks, District Nine.
Good morning, Jacity Vino, District Ten, I have all the communities that surround town of Lunenburg, and I also have big and little Tan Cook Islands.
And I'm Elspeth McLean Wile, Mayor for the District of Lunenburg. The purpose of this public hearing is for council to receive public comments, both written and verbal, concerning the proposed amendments. The amendments involve amendments to the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw to include new sections containing the regulations related to cluster development. Planning staff will present further details in terms of the specific changes that are being proposed. The hearing agenda is as follows, there will be a staff report on the proposed amendments, then we will receive written and verbal presentations from the public, and a review of next steps in the process, and then the hearing will be declared closed. If there are verbal presentations that you're planning to make, I would ask that all persons will come to the podium at the front, state your name and address, and direct all statements to the chair, being me myself, and presentations are limited to ten minutes. Speakers may address council twice if you need more time, but before they speak for a second time, speakers will be requested to wait until all other citizens have had an opportunity to speak. So, at this point, I would now ask staff to make a brief presentation on the amendments.
Good morning, Honorable Counselor and Mayor, today we'll talk about cluster development. So, just a bit of a background, cluster developments are residential development, where multiple detached or multiple unit dwellings share the same property. Since subdivision by law standards do not currently apply to these developments, each project requires individual review. There are some key concerns, include substandard roads, environmental impact, and local capacity of roads, or waste and water management. The reason why these regulations were introduced is because there's a lack of existing development standards for this specific development style. These regulations were introduced and expired, and then reintroduced for a first reading again, they were passed on January 28th, and are now in effect. As a result, any development of this type will be classified as a cluster development and must comply with cluster regulations. We also conducted a public information session on March 3rd, around ten members of the public attended, most feedback was positive, with some concerns regarding density and the grandfathering clause. So, what is cluster development in terms of MODL's regulations? We define cluster development to be six units or more dwelling units contained in two or more dwelling on a single lot. This includes new phases or units in a phase development, and recreational vehicles are not considered to be a cluster development, so that's important to take in note when you think of RV parks, for example, it's not a cluster development. It could be either serviced or not serviced, depends on the land that that development is being developed on. Just examples of how cluster development looks like, so as you can see, two single dwellings on a lot is not considered to be a cluster development. The image in the middle, as you can see, it's a subdivided land of four parcels, that is not considered to be a cluster development. However, six unit dwellings on a single lot, as you can see there, is considered to be a cluster development. Another example is with multiple unit dwellings, as you can see, there's six units on that multiple unit dwelling on one building, that does not consider to be a cluster development. However, two buildings like that, that might contain either six units and up, is considered to be a cluster development. Another option is to see two single unit dwellings, for example, and a multi-unit dwelling that has six units and up, is considered to be a cluster development. So, in terms of phases, because some developments might happen in phases, it could be that the first round, there will be only five units that are located on a lot, it might be, it will not be considered to be a cluster development, but the moment there's a six unit entered into that lot, that's when it's considered to be a cluster development, and it needs to go through the regulations. This is just an example of how a cluster development look like. As you can see, it's a more large-scale cluster development, there's around seventy units here, it's on one lot, and even though it looks like it's subdivided into different lots, it is not, it is on one lot and has several units on one area. And again, as I mentioned before, recreational vehicle parking site is not considered to be a cluster development, they have a different distinction, and they are regulated separately. So, in terms of a summary of what the regulations are, they apply to six units and up, over two structures on any single unserviced lot, these developments would be approved through a development agreement process. For ongoing bareland condominium projects, a window has been provided for these developments to become legally nonconforming by becoming registered as a condominium by December 31st, 2025. There will be a review from council every five years. What is a development agreement, in summary, council may consider individual proposals based on whether they have the adequacy of street network, access, emergency access, water and sewer, is it have safe water supply, and again, suitability in relation to environmental impact, and again, it depends on the size of the development itself, whether if it's six units or ten units, there's different types of regulations that might apply. In terms of a timeline, we can see that we started the initial engagement in July of 2023, there've been some several reports, and PAC, the Public Planning Advisory Committee meeting that has been done, the first reading that was expired happened in July of 2024, and then we had another first reading in January 28th, public information March 3rd, and today we're at public hearing, and, yeah, that's it for now.
Thank you. Are there, at this time, would there be any written submissions that you want to present?
So, yes, we will talk about how many we have received, and what was the main concerns or positions. Staff received total of thirty-five correspondence, primarily from residents, notably one included a petition with eighty-six signatures. Most correspondence were submitted during the initial round of cluster development regulations between 2023 to February 24. Recent submissions were submitted around this month, following the public information session, we received around nine additional correspondence. Key concerns were the grandfathering clause, majority of earlier correspondence urged the council to remove the grandfathering clause, supports of second reading, most recent correspondence expressed support for council moving forward with a second reading of the proposed regulations, and, yeah, that's it for now.
We'll move to the public input, so if there is anyone in the gallery that wishes to speak to this, if they could come forward. Okay. Please introduce yourself and where you're from, just use the mic, yes.
Is this on? Yes. My name is Duncan Crowdis, I'm on the Second Peninsula, 541, Second Peninsula Road, and I have no problem with cluster developments, I think there's probably a case to be made that they're in the appropriate development, depending on the situation, and I don't believe these regulations in any way inhibit further development, alls we're trying to do is to put some regulations into the process. Just as an example, our property is about thirty acres on the Second Peninsula, we bought it twenty-five years ago. I had no desire to subdivide, but I have several children, so I thought, well, I'll just get it checked out and see what would happen if I could subdivide it, in case we wanted to split it up amongst our children, and I have a written document that says that at that time, we could only subdivide it into two pieces, and the reason was sightlines, speed of the road would not be safe more than four lots on our property, and I accepted that, I could understand that. If I was to put a bareland condominium without these regulations, I could have put thirty lots on there, with all that traffic, so if it wasn't safe with four, or safe with more than four, is it safer with thirty? So, that's the only thing we're looking for. Interestingly enough, the bareland condominium development that is already in the process is adjacent to our property, so they're going to have twenty-five, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Mr. Oikle? Oh, no.
Hello.
You may want to raise your good and tall. That'll...
That's why I'm an electrician. My name's Matthew Oikle. I'm here to, I would like to see, get an extension on the bareland condominium corps. I currently have three within MODL here, I'm finishing up my Phase Two on the Sweetland project, I have another Sweetland project, and I own land right beside the French school. So, the reason I would like to see an extension on the condo corp is, it's already in play, so I can already move forward, I just have to hit the deadline of December 2025, but you can't, you have time and money, you don't have both with this, so I would have to rush to do something that I wouldn't have the proper roadways built as to what I would like to see, I'm fighting against Nova Scotia Power with timelines on their poles, like last year, we had a good storm season, they weren't chasing poles, like, I didn't sell many generators in electrical companies, we didn't have powerages, you know, so there's a whole lot of things like that, that contribute to timelines, not just the controllables that I control with the work being done. Community focus is something that I'd like to have some time, one of my companies is designing a twelve-court pickleball court right now, and he's in talks that he'd like to go up on my land. There's a lot of multi-unit housing, I have to get my septic systems in, those are some big things, so if I don't have the time, I can only do so much, and I'll do some clustered, you know, I know I'll get in probably sixty, and then I'll just lot up the rest and sell. That's not the, I don't feel like that's the most, it's not the best way to achieve a good finished product, you know, the more, we need housing, the more housing we have that I can put up there, you know, the more tax base it is too, and the longer I have, I don't think I'm asking for something, I don't think I'm asking for really too much here, it's just an extension on the timeline for my condo corp to, you know, and to have some back and forth with the council and MODL with what they'd like to see and what they'd like to have, because there's a community aspect, and then there's the housing aspect of it too. I have a preliminary plan, if anybody'd like to see kind of what I'm doing, or just not. So, right here, it'd be next to the French school, there's the French school there now, I would have, you know, right now, we're looking at... I would have, you know, right now, we're looking at potentially about 600 units that we could put there. These would be all townhouses and row houses here. We've, we've blocked it out for either like high multi-res or, or some low light commercial buildings. So that's kind of, I just need, I'd like to have some time to, to make this achievable. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
So we take, we will take questions for clarification. The discussion will come when we get into our meeting. So Mr. Counselor Brooks.
Are you able to email a copy of that to council, just so that we have that for our record, so we could see? That would be helpful. Thanks very much.
Other, Counselor Bell.
Question, Mr. Oikle, through you, please. This development that you're referring to there obviously is in Cookville.
Yes.
And do I understand there's two more projects that you have underway now?
Yes.
And what communities are they in?
They're in Sweetland.
Okay.
Yeah, I have condo 45, that's on Mush Mush, and then condo 51 that goes between the Northfield Road and Sweetland Road.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Smith.
So the second development in Sweetland, you feel you need more time?
No, I'm not worried about that. Like those, those ones will all be done. The only thing I'm worried about is 51 here. This is, it's the one that makes the, like, those are easy, selling lots, building houses. This is much more, because the more time you have, the better product you can, you can produce, you know? And like I said, it's not, I don't, I don't really feel this is just something that with the, with the, the size of the piece of land I have, you know, I work with, I work with some big developers now doing trade work for them. So there's, there's a lot of hands that can kind of be in the pot to look and provide, to provide a better product. But just the time, the timing is just unachievable for something good. As a business, I'll throw something together, I'll get a return on my investment. I'm not, that's not the issue at stake here. It's just, you know, you could do so much more for the community and for, for this, this opportunity, I guess.
Counselor Brooks.
How much, how much time do you think would work for you to, what are we talking about here?
I'd like to see an extension of two years on my phase two. I'd have phase one in red, no problem, but phase two, because I'd like to have, I'd like to have the opportunity to, to plan just outside of my development company, 3S Development. I think, you know, if there's a community aspect to it, it, it should be approached, you know, like, because like I said, I'm designing a pickleball, 40,000 square foot pickleball facility right now. I've had two different basketball organizations come and talk to me, because we also build buildings in one of my businesses. So they've talked to me about, about that. So the, in the longer the time you have, the more opportunities that come. And I think, you know, there's, those are just two great examples of things that we don't have here today. You know, that does help the community, never mind the, the housing and everything else that we're going to need.
Excellent.
Any other questions? Counselor Moore.
Thank you. Through you to Mr. Oikle. You're mentioning pickleball courts. Whereabouts are you planning these?
Potentially up on, on my condo 51.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Oikle.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? I saw a couple of other people come to the mic. Just remember to introduce yourself and tell us where you're from, and then we're happy to hear from you.
Hello, everyone. Nice to meet you all. My name is Adam Wicks. I own a small construction management firm called Antler Construction, and I'm speaking today on behalf of the clients and the owners of Forehead Road here in Bridgewater regarding a cluster development that they're planning to do. When I was brought onto the project, I was under the impression from the owners that they had gone through their due diligence of actually researching the land here with the municipality on zoning laws and bylaws for the piece of land they were looking at purchasing before they had purchased the land. In that time, they were actually provided with a zoning letter, which gave them the confidence to go ahead and buy the piece of land, which had in turn involved them to go ahead then and hire an architect here, Nouveau Architecture, to lead the project as a prime consultant. Here?
My name is Peter Goschun, Nouveau Architecture. I was hired by the clients regarding Forehead. And we were looking at, doing a, a capacity study and business plan for the clients to see what, what type of development would fit there, would work there, given the, the water, the, the septic, the stormwater management, access, all that kind of stuff. So we, we were given, we met with the municipality, we were given until, until July of 25 to get a permit set in. Apparently, there was some maybe miscommunication on that date, but that's what we were told. So the clients hired consultants. We moved forward with drawings. We, Adam submitted. They weren't accepted.
We, we actually, once, once we went ahead and decided to go, we hired all the consultants that was necessary to do a building design, apartment building, and a cluster system. And it involved retaining a civil engineer, structural engineer, mechanical engineer, all the consultants necessary in order to put a plan together. Because maybe there was some miscommunication on the date for July of 2025, but we were under the impression that based on the zoning letter, there was actually no bylaws on this particular piece of land. And the original plan was to go get a development permit first to solidify what we could put on the land, and then work forward with a, with a building permit in the future. The problem was, was that we were under the impression, we were told, that where there was no zoning and no bylaws for this particular piece of land, we actually had to go right away to go get a full detailed design, to go get the building permit for all the structures. That, given the timeline that we had, and by the time I got involved in the project would have been November of 2024 of last year, I had come here and I had met with the municipality and the owners, and we were told that the first reading had already started. But there was possibly a window of opportunity coming up in January. If the first reading didn't pass in December, we would have a window of opportunity to go and get a building permit on, only. We did not have an option to go get a development permit at this point, because there was no zoning and no bylaws on the piece of land. Given this constrained time window, they had hired me to help them put the pieces together and all the consultants together, necessary to be successful in getting a building permit. In doing so, we had hired and paid multiple consultants to put together drawings, Form fours, all the consultant forms, everything necessary to be able to submit for a building permit. Unfortunately, during that time, all the consultants had dropped what they were doing to do this with our tight timeline, and we had spoken with getting water brought into the site, looking at how we would service the apartment buildings with municipal water, how we would get three-phase electrical to the site, and all the civil work that would be required for stormwater management, septic designs, everything necessary for a permit. Unfortunately-
Can you just speak up a little? I think some of our counselors are having trouble hearing, so.
Sorry, sorry.
And also, there's a recording that we, that is available to the public.
Gotcha, gotcha. Sorry about that. So based on that, given this timeline, we had a month to go and get the building permit, everything necessary for a building permit design, which in a month is not a whole lot of time, if you can underst, yes. But in that amount of time, we had hired all the consultants, we had detailed designs for fire, structural, architectural, mechanical was on the way. We did everything we possibly could. Unfortunately, the timeline of February the 1st that we were told, if we had have had that one extra week, we would have been able to get our septic system approved for, from Environment Nova Scotia. And the goal, the February the 1st date got moved up to January the 27th. And unfortunately, that cut a week out of our one month that we had to go get the building permit design. And we're, we're looking for an extension to be able to finish the design that we had started for the development plan, for a land that didn't have any bylaws or zoning laws on that particular piece of land. Do you want to add to that?
Yeah, and I believe you guys have an email that we, that Adam sent out yesterday showing what we were doing and how much work was actually put in. There was quite a bit of work, quite a bit of time, a lot of stress, obviously. And we would just like you to take that into consideration of how much money, time was put into this, that we were given the information by the municipality that we had until the 25th, until July of 25 to complete this, and that was cut way short, so.
Down to February the 1st.
Yeah, down to February 1st.
Down to February the 1st. And then as we were approaching the February 1st timeline, even with all the communications that we had been having down here with the municipality to confirm these dates and, and to be able to do the work that we were given, the timeline even got shorter as we were doing the building permit design. So that February the 1st timeline that we were working towards to get everything ready was actually shortened by another week. And it, it enabled us to not be able to be successful in the permit.
Okay, we can take questions. Counselor Vino.
A couple points of clarification. And you're opening a statement you had said in Bridgewater. Can you confirm that the lot you're speaking of is actually in the District of Lunenburg and not in the town of Bridgewater?
It's brief ordering on, on both, on both, on both. Yeah, it's in, it's in, it's not in the, in the town of Bridgewater. It's very close by. It's District 2.
Okay. Another comment that you had made was that you were told that there was a window of opportunity and a February 1st date, and I'm wondering who you heard that from or where that comes from? Who would have told you you had a window of opportunity and given a February 1st date?
That was during my first meeting that I came down here with, with the owners and the clients, and that was when we met with Norma Schaefer. And we were given a date of a window that if the first reading didn't pass in December, we would, we would be notified, and that would, that new go, that new time would be February the 1st, to have a month of window to go for a building permit rather than, because we couldn't go for a development permit. We were not, not able to go for a development permit, but we would have had that one window of opportunity to go get a building permit, which in return required us to go and hire all the consultants necessary to get that detailed design. And unfortunately, that month of window opportunity actually got shortened after we had hired everyone and paid all the consultants to do this work.
And there's another, another thing that we were told was that when we first-
Could you speak up, please, in the mic? Yes, thank you. Yeah, just, if you bend the mic towards you, it might pick up your voice. Thank you so much.
So when we met with the municipality back in May of 24, we were told that we could do a phased development without any restrictions on, on, on what we, as long as it worked engineering-wise, that we could do one building at a time. By the time we actually went to submit for a permit, we were told that all the buildings had to be built at the same time, which was like a whole new wrench in the, in the project. Just thought you should know that as well, yeah.
Counselor Bell.
Thank you. Just so people who are listening at home or for the record, we've had material that you made available to us yesterday. So obviously, based on a cluster development, this is more than six units, it's more than two structures. But for the record, we're probably looking at maybe four eight-unit apartment buildings on one section, three 84 units on another section. So we're looking at close to 300 units or 280 units. So I think we need to make sure that people understand that. So you had mentioned a little bit about professional services that you have retained so far. So you mentioned consultants. So you obviously had architects involved, land surveyors, and engineers for your building? Okay. So one of the delays was beyond your scope, being Nova Scotia Department of Environment getting back to you? So just for the record, you're nodding your head that the fact that you had architectures, surveyors, there's a fair investment so far in this project. May I ask another question? Can you tell me what the, the current status of the project is, including work to date and the various studies that you needed to get to this point?
Yeah, you actually have, what we sent last night is, is up to date. We stopped working on the project after Adam was, refused the application. We would have probably had it finished by now had we continued, which would have been better, obviously, for the clients, because they wanted to start construction once the construction season started, which is around now. So that got delayed. They still want to get started at least on one of the eight-unit buildings to get this year's construction timeline in. Yeah.
If there's no one else, I'd like to ask another question.
You go ahead, and then we'll hear from Counselor DeLonge, who's online.
Okay. What is the required timeline to move your project forward to completion? If we were able to accommodate you, and, and I don't know if we are, but can you just give me an idea of what the timeline would be to, to put this forward?
The, the eight-unit buildings, we could use wells and septic, that they can start almost right away. The larger apartment buildings, where we're looking at bringing in municipal water and power to, and, because we don't, we'll need sprinkled buildings. So they'll, they'll need a bit more time to, to figure out. But we figure by the time the, the four eight-unit buildings would be built, that would be ready to go. And it was, the idea was that it was a phased project over a number of years even, not just all at once.
And I noticed that with the variety of the buildings you have here, you are addressing accessibility. So it would be good for the senior population. And the fact that your apartment buildings were traditionally used to steps in the Bridgewater area, and you're, you're putting the option of elevators, which is a nice thing.
Yeah, actually, every single unit, every single unit is, is accessible by wheelchair, even the, the smaller buildings, where there, there's a hill. If you can see the drawings, there's a, there's an upper unit and a lower unit, which are both accessible. There's not a single staircase in any of those eight-unit buildings. It's not, it's not necessary, because they're just on grade. And then the apartment buildings obviously have elevators. Yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor DeLonge.
Thank you. I think my question on this is for staff.
That'll come, that, that'll come later when we have the discussion. The questions now are just for the proponents that are here.
Very well, thank you.
Counselor Vino.
You might not have this information, which is completely understandable. You mentioned receiving a letter that gave you a July 2025 timeline. When did you receive that letter?
No, there was no letter received.
Sorry, a zoning letter, zoning confirmation letter?
The zoning confirmation letter was received on January the 10th, but it didn't mention the July 2025 date.
Where does that date come from you've referenced?
Multiple meetings. Actually, my meeting with municipality, they gave us the 25th, the July 25 deadline. It was also mentioned, I believe, by the owner before I even met the owner, before I even knew about the project. But, yeah.
Counselor Hoobley.
Hi. So how long of an extension are you requesting? What do you think it would take?
Well, Adam thinks three months.
Well, I think less.
I think less, yeah. We, we could be ready to go to build the town, the, the smaller units. Probably within a month, we'll be ready to, to have that design. But when, when it comes to the apartment buildings, we still need a little bit more time with the water and the electrical. But we do have a plan in place already with our electrical engineer, and we've been talking with the municipality as well about bringing the water in with the, so we, we have a plan in place for water and electrical for the apartment buildings. So we would need about three more months to solidify that, to have a look at that. But when it comes to the smaller buildings, where they're going to be on well waters, we're ready to go. We've got building, we got drawings ready, we've got the wells, and we just need to get our septic approval done for, for those, for those smaller units. But we only need about a month to get that ready for you.
Yeah, and the idea is that we'd like to finish the master plan for the site, the master site plan before we even started the eight-unit building, to make sure that everything was working out.
Counselor Smith and then Counselor Vino.
So could, could you just tell me in very clear terms, like, what's the alternative if you don't get an extension?
if you don't get an extension?
We haven't really talked about an alternative, but I guess that would be a conversation we'd have to have with the clients. Yeah.
Counselor Vino.
Your situation isn't really black and white. I'm struggling here with the dates, and I'm very familiar with cluster developments. I've been dealing with this with, for two years, trying to work around the process. So right now, the regulations are in place because we've passed first reading. You're looking for a three-month extension. This might be a question for Tom, and therefore, they might shut this down. So you're asking us to suspend cluster regulations for three months and then come back to first reading? I'm confused at the window there. And if that's a question for later, I'm getting the nod, so I'll withhold that question, but I will, I'll bring that up later because the regulations are in place now, and I don't know how we'd accommodate that, but I'll ask that later.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I thought it might be, more of a council question. Yeah.
Counselor Bell.
I waited till some other people spoke. I just want to make sure I understand who you are targeting as potential tenants for your buildings. Obviously, you want to attract seniors to this. The buildings are done in an accessible manner, so we're looking at those who have physical challenges. Is there affordable housing options built into your overall plan, and is there an option that might be attractive to students who want short-term rental for a year or two if they were going to community college? Like, which group, or is it all groups that you're targeting?
It is all groups. In my presentation that I sent, that Adam sent, we kind of described the, the target audience for the eight units versus the apartment buildings. The apartment buildings, when it comes to the cost, is obviously less per square foot when you're building a larger development, which makes it more affordable. The clients have also been in touch with CMHC and Affordable Housing to discuss those options on how that would move forward, but that is their intention to have a portion of the larger apartment buildings as affordable housing.
Thank you. I ask that because it's important to be all encompassing, and I want to...
Further questions? I, I'm not sure you can answer this or you're prepared to answer. Can you give us any idea of the level of investment that's been made to date?
At somewhere, I'd have to go back and double-check the numbers, but we're somewhere between $50,000 to $60,000 right now.
Other questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm wondering if there's anyone else in the gallery that wishes to speak this morning during this public hearing. I'm not, yeah, Dan.
I'm not an expert on...
Just introduce yourself again for the record.
Duncan Crowder, Second Peninsula, and I'm not an expert on how all this sort of flows out in a development, but from my understanding is that there's nothing in the regulation proposal or the regulations that were, I went through first reading, that inhibit anything that we've just heard. It's just to put a little more rigor, and I think it's unfortunate, and while it's not a surprise, that there are some excellent developers all over that are doing great work. No one here, it's not surprising that you didn't get any of the bad actors that came to present here, and there's a bunch of folks out there that are, are waiting for these extensions to be able to do things that we know we don't want to happen in our neighborhoods. And quite frankly, I've been around this horn in other businesses. You extend it, whatever, and there's going to be two more that are going to have a very good case that they need an extension. That will never stop.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Yeah.
Hi, I'm Adam Wicks, back again. I just wanted to quickly just go over the costs that we had associated with. The breakdown of costs to date totals $90,000 of an investment on Williamhead Road, and it starts with the zoning letter that we had originally started with, civil design for $1,800, Nouveau Architecture, $20,000, Antler Construction, $5,000, Structural Engineer, Campbell Camo, $19,000, Mechanical Electrical, EFP Engineering, $19,000, Fire Suppression, Reinhardt Engineering, $7,500, Integral Energy, which is our energy consultant for CMHC, $5,000, for a total subtotal of $70,000 before tax. That's our total investment to date on the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Vino.
Just Tyler Vino here from Northfield. The second last gentleman that had spoke was about changing the communities and stuff, and that you could still do your developments. You can still do your developments. Just the hardest thing is it's going to cost more, and with what Counselor Bell had said, affordable housing. There's no such thing as affordable housing, in my opinion, in 2025. Everything's expensive. So it's just something to keep in mind, that the more rules we put in place, the more expensive things will get. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay.
Hi, my name is Catherine Heckman, and I'm also from Second Peninsula. I sympathize with the cost of development. I understand the need for affordable housing, but I also think that there should be a level playing field with the type of development that happens, so that you don't have the exact same apparent development, an apartment building or a house or commercial development, and if you choose one route, you're completely unregulated by the municipality. And if you choose another route, you have all kinds of regulations. I just think that this is unfair to developers. They put in a lot of money and time and effort. It's also unfair to the community. We all have expectations of a level playing field, of fairness, of a sense of how things should be done. And if you've created these different avenues that are apples and oranges, you have to change that. You have to level that playing field so everyone knows what will happen, and that what will happen will be the best thing for the community. That will require some regulations. Life is that way in a society. That's what counselors are here for, is to provide some sort of oversight. And you will have some developers in an unregulated environment that will do a fantastic job, and you will have others who will cut every corner, and your affordable housing will be a nightmare. Your unaffordable housing will have unintended consequences. So that's the role of the government, is to make sure that that doesn't happen. We're not saying that nothing should happen, that no land should ever have anything put on it, but it has to be fair, and it has to work properly, efficiently. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak this morning during the public hearing? Not seeing anything, so I need to ask if there is anyone else wishing to, to present? And for a third time, is there anyone else wishing to present? I don't see anyone. So municipal council may make a decision at the council meeting after the close of the public hearing, or we can choose, choose other, make another decision. If council deems it advisable to amendments to the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw to include new sections containing the regulations related to cluster development, council will conduct second reading, and that would happen today. Once council has approved the documents, they are forwarded to the Provincial Department of Municipal Affairs for review, and upon confirmation from Municipal Affairs that the documents do not conflict with any provincial statement of interest, a notice of approval is inserted in the local newspaper advising of the adoption of these documents. The date that the public notice appears in the paper is the date the documents become effective. At this point, I now declare this public hearing closed, and we will take just a couple of minutes, and then if there's those in the gallery that don't want to stay for the further discussion, because we will begin our council meeting in just a couple of minutes, and then we'll put cluster development early in the agenda. I think one of our, our counselors will propose that, and those who may not want to stay further are welcome to, to leave. And I think I've got two minutes. Yeah, just, we'll just...